All right, all rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, created just as for all.
Welcome everyone on to the board of supervisors, April 1st business meeting. We will just do a roll call for purposes of the minutes. I'm present. John's here, Michael's here, Scott Holbert is here. Our township engineer was not asked to be here this evening and therefore he's not here and Judith Danko is our manager and is present. The rules of engagement apply to this meeting. If you need a copy of it, there are copies on the sideboard as are copies of the agenda, but it looks like everybody here has picked up their agenda. In terms of announcements, the board held an executive session on March 14th at 8:30 a.m. regarding litigation. We held a special meeting this past week, March 27th, from 4:30 until about, I think it went for two and a half hours. Yes, so it went until seven o'clock regarding Upper Bucks Regional EMS and specifically emergency service within Tinicum Township. And we also held an executive session this evening at 6:30 to discuss litigation, specifically matters pertaining to the Sandcastle Winery and Oak Grove. We've reached the first round of public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, we invite you to come to the podium, state your name, and just make sure that you speak into the mic for the recording and for the benefit of people who are joining us remotely. So. Would anyone, is there any public comment? Okay. Next up, yes, of course. Yep.
Hello, I'm Amy Hollander. I'm the Historic Resources Manager for Bucks County Parks and Recreation, and in particular in charge of all the program events and buildings at the Irwin Stover House and Stover Barnes. And so I'm here mostly to introduce myself to you and to thank you for the beautiful letter of support that you wrote for our planned America 250 Heritage Day event for May of 2026. And to just give you a really brief report on where we're at, I got a wonderful letter of support from the Palisades School District. They are going to be partnering with us on this event and the students of the school district are going to be providing an art exhibit, some musical, period musical concerts, some probably some skits and other kinds of projects. I'm going to be meeting with the school in June, the department heads, to discuss what they want to do and then in August we'll start planning for the event. I also received a beautiful letter of support from Visit Bucks County. And I am also working to get local businesses involved. Bucks County Joyrides, which is a Jeep tour, historic tour company, is going to be supporting us in some way. And so I've also reached out to Where We Run and some other businesses. So. We're really at the beginning stages and I'm hoping to have a planning meeting sometime at the end of April.
That is very good. That's excellent. Thank you. Are you, can you describe how you are coordinating or working with our historical commission?
So my plan would be to have like monthly, probably Zoom events for most of them because we have so many different groups involved, businesses, et cetera, and they all, and schools all have different timetables. But I would like to schedule a regular monthly meeting to begin with the planning and with the steering committee, which we've started to develop. And then as we move forward, it may be that it'll be quarterly with like specific committees within the steering committee meeting monthly. So I have to gauge how much work has to be done and how many people we have on board. But that's, that's what I'm looking at and I was waiting to get here back from the school before I set the first meeting because I wanted to make sure they were completely on board and and, and so they got me the letter. So I will be reaching out to the historic commission to set up the first meeting.
Okay, that sounds great. Do you have a specific date in May of 2026?
I believe we said the 16th, which is a Saturday.
Great, thank you.
And if anybody's interested in getting involved, you can just come and talk to me.
Thank you, Amy. Any additional public comment? Okay, Chief, we're ready for your report.
Good evening, everyone. Tinicum Township Police Department reported 283 incident reports for the month of March. Seventy-four were for service, 70 were investigative or criminal, including two theft reports, one fraud report, one warrant arrest, and one arrest for possession and resisting arrest. Hundred and twenty-six were for traffic and 13 were for court and training. We had no reportable crashes in March and we've had an average of one reportable crash in March over the last five years. Officers conducted 14 truck details on River Road. Two trucks were reported on River Road and both drivers were cited. I did follow up with PennDOT regarding the pavement study and signage and as of today, we still don't have an update on that. We are currently participating in a statewide aggressive driving initiative through April 27th. This enforcement wave focuses on distracted driving and speeding with the goal to reduce the number of aggressive driving related crashes, injuries and deaths on roadways throughout the state. PennDOT conducted an engineering and traffic study for the intersections of Cafferty Road and Geigle Hill Road at the request of the township. Based on the findings in the study, roadway characteristics, field observations and crash history, it was determined that always stop control warrants are not satisfied for either leg of the intersection. PennDOT did note some sight distance restriction on the western leg of Cafferty Road. In response, letters have been sent to the homeowners requesting that they remove the vegetation and we have already received some responses as well. The eastern intersection had no sight distance restrictions and had at least 500 feet of sight distance. LTAP completed their traffic study relating to truck traffic at the intersection of River Road and Cafferty Road. This was in response to the church's building getting struck with trucks turning onto Cafferty from River. There are several low cost items the township can consider, including additional truck restriction signage at the intersection and flexible delineators to realign the intersection. This would require approval from PennDOT since it intersects with the state road and the approximate cost to the township would be $733.44, including labor by our Public Works Department. And this, my opinion is that this is the best step to start with if that's what the township would like to do.
Can you describe what the flexible delineator looks like? Like what is, what is that?
This is not going to be very technical, but it's like a white stick in the ground that's flexible. So if you do hit it with a car, it'll kind of move. So. Just to kind of realign the roads so cars know where am I turning?
Okay.
We have some events coming up. We have Ice Cream with the Cop scheduled for Friday, April 18th from 2:00 to 4:00 at O'Val Cow. Free ice cream will be provided to all children and is sponsored by the Police Foundation. The Drug Take Back is scheduled for Saturday, April 26th from 10:00 to 2:00 at Waring's Home Center. Our First Responder Event has been scheduled for Saturday, August 16th from 1:00 to 4:00 at Delaware Valley Fire Company. And NOVA is hosting an online training on Wednesday, April 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 on sexting and sextortion and how to talk to your teens about the dangers of online exploitation. We'll be sending out our spring mailer for the Police Foundation this week with our events for the year, what we have funded already for the year and the goals that we have going forward. So keep an eye on your mailboxes for that. We received a new docking station and batteries for portable radios, which we received through Bucks County, who obtained them through a Department of Justice grant. We've also installed the automated license plate reader on Officer Barrington's truck, which was also purchased by the Police Foundation. Total cost for the project was $12,795.44. The automated license plate reader collects vehicle data by using two high resolution cameras to capture and analyze license plate information. This data will assist law enforcement in tracking stolen vehicles, identifying suspects and supporting criminal investigations.
Chief, the link for the NOVA webinar, is that on?
That is on our website as well as on Facebook, yes.
Okay. Anything else, anything?
Does the state police, do the state police let you know when there's been a reportable crash?
They do. We get the call log from them. They're on this month.
Okay, I just thought that was new damage. There at Dark Hollow in Smithtown, looks like somebody went off the road and hit something there, a tree.
You know what? That is interesting that you bring that up. That was listed as a DUI in their call log.
Okay.
So.
With a crash.
So I suppose, yes, I should pull two numbers for that.
Because there was a piece of a vehicle there too. So they hit, they hit the tree. I guess it's right there. Okay.
Yes, that would, that would be a reportable crash.
Okay.
Caused by DUI.
Now I've done to hear about it. Okay, fine. So it was the state police that did that one then?
They handled that one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have our manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Nice crowd here tonight. We have some announcements to make. The American Red Cross Blood Drive will take place at Point Pleasant Baptist Church this Thursday, April 3rd from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Please be sure to sign up. There's a link on our website. And there's also some other dates on the website too, if that does not work for your schedule. So we look forward to people coming out and donating blood. Volunteers are needed for seasonal cleanup at our Parks and Recreation Committee Park Cleanup Day. That is this April 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Tinicum Community Park. That's behind Cooper Mechanical. Rain date is April 6th. Please email Parks and Recreation's Chairperson, Terry Johnston. All of this information is on our website for your convenience also. Of course. Excuse me. Chief Maddenham mentioned the Drug Take Back Day, which is April 26th. Our EAC is also hosting an Earth Day Fair on April 27th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tinicum Park. Please come out again and enjoy some of the things that the committees are working on. It's very important so that we can get a momentum and people involved. It's really wonderful when people come out and enjoy these events. A lot of work goes into it. We also talk about lights out, spread the word to create awareness, to turn off your outdoor lighting to decrease, to decrease light pollution and support the migrating birds in the spring and the fall seasons. We also will have our primary election, which will be on Tuesday, May 20th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. One of the voting places is our office, which will be closed for business, but open as a polling station. Please also know that the senior citizens calendar is also on our bulletin board and on our website and they have a lot of interesting items that are taking place also. One of the major things that we have taking place very shortly this Thursday, as a matter of fact, is going to be the updating of our computer technology. It's been a long awaited project and at that time, due to this, our zoning and code department will be temporarily without some computers Thursday, late afternoon into Monday of the next week. We're hoping that by Tuesday we'll be back up and running, but our zoning and code, they're only here two days a week, usually is a Thursday and a, and a Tuesday. So we're hoping by the time that things are needed, we'll be back up and running. So we're very excited. And your patience is greatly appreciated for this project. So please be patient and, and know that we'll, once we are back up and running, that will be newly innovated, to say the least. So we're very excited about that. Sealed bids advertisement is on our, excuse me, our agenda this evening to be placed out to bid for the sealing of the township roads. We have a lot of other items on here that are administratively, so I'm going to, going to just kind of skip over those. I wanted to just provide some of the announcements, but thank you again.
Thank you, Judith. Do we have anything from the engineers report or the Public Works report to add here?
Our engineer's report talks about all the subdivisions and the preliminary land developments that are taking place currently, the Trenton, the Spinio, the Lock, Oak Grove subdivision, Crucial Tract. We are also working on some truck studies and evaluations. Talks about the Golden Pheasant Bridge, which we had reported on last month and we're, we'll be continuing to work with PennDOT and the county with some of those other bridges. And it also talks about the municipal complex that's being proposed. We're still awaiting an answer from the LSA grant that we applied for, for a million dollars. So we should be hearing in September as to whether we'll be awarded the funding for that. And in the meanwhile, we'll be working towards trying to gather some plans and so forth and, and some of the things that are needed. And that is also on the engineer's report. From Public Works, we've got quite a few roadway areas that they're working on. Let me see, debris and ditches for grading operation on Tank Hannan Ridge Valley and Tammany Roads. Patching potholes on dirt and gravel roads. They graded Tammany Road. Then they also began to grade Wildcat Road. And also patching paddles, again, Tank Hannan and intersection of Ridge Valley and Headquarters Road. So they've been, the Public Works Department has been actively working towards working on the roadway systems.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So they have a schedule together yet for the township for this year? Do they have a region yet? Usually they do it by.
We have that for this evening.
The areas that they're going to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we might as well offer the Headquarters Road Bridge update now. So it's included in our engineer's report. As for folks who, there are a lot of new faces here this evening. So just to kind of catch everybody up. We, the township. The township submitted a GP 11 general permit application to DEP for the historic rehabilitation of the Headquarters Road Bridge. We did that in December and then a permit was issued, the permit was rescinded. A new submission was made, all within a couple of weeks' time. So since the beginning part of the year, the township has been in, has been, really, our township engineer has been very aggressively trying to answer all the questions that DEP has raised. And there have been a number of follow-up lists of questions that have been asked and immediately responded to. As it stands, as of this afternoon, DEP has every single bit of information that they have asked for in multiple forms. And we are, we are waiting their determination. It has been approved at the, at the last meeting. We approved the authorization of the bid package. We obviously haven't done that yet because we haven't been issued a permit, but given that we're meeting once a month, we wanted to make sure that that authorization was ready. In the event a permit is issued in between our meeting dates, that we wouldn't lose those weeks. You know, we, we do acknowledge that we're getting close to missing out on this construction season, which is absolutely not where we wanted to be. However, I think it is fair to say that the cause of delay is squarely on DEP's side. And I think what we are navigating as a township is kind of some, you know, we're kind of navigating the legacy here that the years of, of litigation have, you know, that DEP was involved in. You know, nobody wants to be involved in litigation. They don't want to be. They don't want to do anything that leaves them open to any kind of legal claim and therefore they're being extremely conservative in their review of our general permit application. And I, I think that there's pretty much no question that we satisfy the criteria for the permit to be issued. We did two months ago. So we're just, we're just waiting. Anything else?
Well, I think you're being nice. We actually submitted what we needed to in December.
That's true.
Okay, and that's why the permit was issued then. And it was issued in a perfunctory manner that the man who reviews these permit applications and issues them saw all the boxes were checked and issued the permit. And it was his superiors who decided they were going to get involved and rescind the permit. And we have, we, as Eleanor has mentioned, we submitted stuff, not just once, not just twice, but sometimes three times now, the same information. And it's, it's, that's, I don't know what they're doing. I really don't. It's very questionable. What they're up to.
The submission today simply identifies everything that they already have and kind of shows them where it, where it is and when they received it. Yeah.
That's.
If I might add, we also have, we have had the clearances from the PHMC.
Yes.
The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. All of those.
The National Park Service, like all the other agencies who have input on this have all approved it.
Twice.
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay. So that's the Headquarters Road Bridge update. And now we have our solicitor's report. Anything to report?
Nothing this month, just happy spring, everyone. It's my favorite time here.
And I thought you had an April's Fools' Jokes for us.
No, not today.
Good. Okay, we are at F on the agenda. It's the consent agenda for our consideration. So we have the business meeting minutes from our March, March 4th, 2025 meeting. We have the Treasurers Report for February of 2025. We have the Payroll Report for March of 2025 in the amount of $86,653.30. We have disbursements for March from the General Fund in the amount of $220,594.47 from the State Fund in the amount of $4,234.31 from the escrow fund in the amount of $831.98 and from the escrow management fund, $3,490.17. We also have consideration of requests from Haycock Township for fire police assistance from the Delaware Valley Volunteer Fire Company on May 18th, 2025 for the Independent Triathlon. And also the request for fire police assistance on August 3rd for the Steel Man Triathlon at Naucemixon State Park. Is there items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Also move, second.
Okay, and this is a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here, I'm in action items now on letter G. Is anyone here for 61 Rogue Walk Road? Okay, so we won't take it out of order. Number one is consideration of 703 River Road. Scott, do you want to describe what's happening here?
Yeah, this property, back in, oh wait, it's in my right hand. Here you have it. Back in October, this is something that's been going on for a little bit of time apparently with the previous zoning officer, that there is the property at 703 River Road, there was a fence replacement. We got this letter from PennDOT or she got a letter from PennDOT, the owner of the property and provided it to us that because the fence is in the right of way, but it was also within PennDOT's right of way. PennDOT doesn't seem to have an issue with it based on what they've reviewed. At the point, she submitted a zone, you know, a zoning application. There were some questions that came up with regard to and from the planning commission, things like that. We just wanted to bring it to your attention. I mean, I think the way to go here is unless anyone on this board agrees, she submitted the zoning application. The question is, what it comes down to is the fence is within the right of way of both River Road and, excuse me, I can't remember what the other road is.
Stagecoach.
Stagecoach, thank you. Stagecoach Road, so one PennDOT Road, one Township Road. That is technically in violation of our zoning ordinance. I think the way to go is, you know, PennDOT seems to believe that this fence has been there in some sort of way with regard to River Road at least and what they've reviewed. So in their view, they don't consider it an obstruction. Obviously, it's been, been getting hits, but there's questions of whether it was always where it was with regard to Stagecoach Road. I think the question is just, you know, the way to go here is, you know, I can, we don't need a formal vote or anything like that. Just, I can talk with the zoning officer, say, look, she's got to show that the fence has already been replaced and reinstalled. She's got to show that this is the same place, it's the same location, it's existed there for however many years they're claiming. Otherwise, she'll need relief from the zoning hearing board.
No, as far as, okay, hang on a second. Hang on a second. As, as far as I know, the permit, there was no permit for the replacement of the fence?
It was done before me. I don't, ask her.
Not at the time, but there, but there was a submission of a permit at this time.
At this time, yes. But when it was done, there was no plan put in, no plan showing where the fence was before they replaced it.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, would you like to come up?
So the fence was in.
Sorry, can you just?
Sure. My name is Sandra Sutton Lavis, owner of 703 River Road. The fence was in disrepair. I simply replaced the fence in the same exact location, same exact fence that was previously there. I was able to find and submitted pictures from Google Maps going back, I think it was at least 20 years, showing the fence in that location. All of the pictures are there, which the previous zoning officer took that shows the fence in the same exact location, including the same exact location on Stagecoach Road. I was sent the violation notice, immediately worked with PennDOT to get the approval. That took a considerable amount of time as you can imagine, I'm hearing the difficulties the township has getting approval from departments. So imagine the time it takes for a property owner to get PennDOT to approve the fence. I submitted the letter as requested from PennDOT, authorizing the fence to remain in the same position that it currently is. Following that submission, I was asked to submit the permit and pay the $100 application fee. I actually got a letter from the township in December saying that it was approved. And then I got another letter from the township in March saying that my approval was sent in error and asked me to come to the meeting today. I've complied with absolutely everything that's been requested. I also included a copy of the survey from back in whenever it was, 2009, that shows the location of the fence. I simply replaced the existing fence in the same exact location.
And it was the same type of fence?
Same exact type of fence, split rail fence. Three, three rails, same location.
I just want, I just did want to add that we've had several complaints regarding the fence because of not being able to see beyond it when they're trying to make a turn. So we did have those complaints. We did bring that to the board. The board was very concerned about the site triangle of, of persons that are coming to the stop sign and being able to make a turn. So that was a concern. And then there were people that who have actually been providing us with photos that the board has that the fence has just been hit over and over.
Okay, and I'll, I'll tell you when the fence was hit. The fence was hit by the snow plows. It wasn't hit by the actual plows. It was hit because they were going 45 to 50 miles an hour down the road plowing. And the actual, it was that really heavy wet snow ice and all of that ice was thrown up against the fence. And if you look at the picture, it's this, it's been falling down because they've, again, but the same exact location on every post the same day. I already have a contract out to have the posts replaced. Obviously, they couldn't do it during the freezing season. But as soon as I'm on, I've paid for it and as soon as I'm on the list, I mean, honestly, I should be here complaining about the plows and the speed that they go down this road while they're plowing and throw this ice and snow up against fences, houses.
Mailboxes.
Mailboxes. I mean, it's costing me $1,000 to have this repaired.
That's, that's, that's a Penn. That's, that's, that's a Penn Dot Road though, so there was, we tend to contractors that do that. So just.
I'm letting you know how it got, how it got.
Complain to the, to them.
I'm, I'm letting you know how it got damaged.
The only issue I have, one issue I have here is, are we as a board legally allowed to grant waivers or anything without it going through a proper process?
So there, there's no real action for you guys to take tonight. Obviously, we heard from her, we could take, we could talk with the zoning officer, he'll have to review everything. It's, you know, he's the one who has either, A, make the decision in either direction, and then the only, if, you know, you know, if he disagrees, the only relief can come from the zoning hearing board.
Right.
But.
I'm, I'm having trouble understanding that since I already have a letter from you approving it.
That letter was sent in error.
I have the letter.
And there's another letter superseding it.
Yes.
You can't rescind.
Yes, 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 he can. If it was made a mistake, he can rescind it.
How did he make a mistake? He told me exactly what I needed to do and that it would be approved. I did what I was asked to do, and the approval came.
That letter was sent before your permit application, was it not? It was sent in December, and the permit application is dated in January.
It asked me to send the permit application in together with the hundred dollar fee. And if that was done, it would be approved. That's what the letter said. That's what I did. I got a letter approving it.
And he then is able to rescind it. Yes, he is.
I mean, I've replaced a fence. Do you see what you've put me through? And I'll tell you that during all of this time, I lost my son. So I've been dealing with this nonsense for replacing a fence because it looked like shit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. We'll figure this out. Okay. Next, we have item two on the agenda is consideration of the stormwater facility operation and maintenance agreement for sixty one Rokebuck Road.
Yes, the owner in this case, Stuart Hirsch in Brook Basin, Bassin, apologize if I said that correctly. They're constructing a pool, a deck, and other improvements to their property. It's an increase in impervious surface of approximately four hundred thirteen square feet. As is required by your stormwater management ordinance, with the increase in pervious surface, stormwater facilities are required. And this is our, just our standard agreement that they enter into to make sure it's properly maintained.
Okay, do we have any questions about the agreement?
No.
No? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the operation and maintenance agreement for sixty one Rokebuck Road. I'll second.
All right, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three is the consideration to advertise the Seal Coat bid packages for twenty twenty five. Is there, is there a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve advertisement of a Seal Coat bid package for twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
All right. Any comment? I'm just looking at the notes here on, on this.
Yeah, I saw that. I was like, wow. That's why I didn't make a motion yet.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four is consideration to award Plumstead materials. The bid for materials listed below per ton for Tinicum Township based on the Bucks County Consortium's bids. Screening quarry grid, twelve dollars. One B and a half stone, thirty one dollars, ninety five cents. Two B three quarter stone, twenty one dollars, ninety five cents. Number four ballast stone, twenty two dollars, fifty cents. Number two A stone mix, fourteen dollars. R four stone, twenty two dollars and fifty cents. R five stone, twenty five dollars and forty five cents. R six stone, twenty eight dollars. R seven, R eight stone, thirty eight dollars.
They are the low bid, and they are the closest quarry to us.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Close quarry, but that's okay.
It operates.
I believe they're the, I believe, we've done this in other meetings. I believe they were the core of the bidders. They were the closest.
If they, if they're the lowest bid and they're qualified bidder, I would say, okay, you know, I'll still make a motion that we accept the bids from Plumstead Materials for the listed below, the materials listed below.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five is consideration to adopt the proposed ordinance number two seventy two, amending section eight oh nine of the Tinicum Township zoning ordinance to permit only closed-loop geothermal systems.
Discussion?
Okay, well, this, this was, uh, was a result of an application for an open-loop system that occurred that eventually was withdrawn. But just to explain, an open-loop, open-loop system is a system which will, is used for geothermal systems that will take water out of the ground, extract whatever energy it needs from that water, and then dump it on the ground, I would presume. It's no return to the, the earth. Our aquifer is too fragile for that, so we would like to not have that be allowed in the township or even the opportunity for it to be present in the township. So we're just going to have to say a closed-loop systems only, which use the, they actually sound like a, a, a fluid through coils that collect the heat, bring it back in, or, and, and extract the energy it needs to extract for the HVAC system in your house. But, but there's no water taken out of the ground. It's just recirculating the energy and the heat.
Yeah. And this ordinance was formulated by our planning commission. It's been reviewed by our solicitor, or maybe you drafted it, they reviewed it.
They provided the, actually with this one, yes, I drafted it, they reviewed it. The Bucks County Planning Commission has reviewed it, and all the recommendations from them were to, for the township to adopt it.
Yes, and it has been advertised and is ready to be voted on. All right, so I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number two seventy two.
I will second that.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six is consideration of the proposed ordinance number two seventy three, amending section two zero one of our zoning ordinance as amended to revise the definition of lot area and provide a definition for lot area within a qualifying improvement. John, do you want to give a similar?
Yeah, a lot of that had to do with some properties that, let me read it again real quick here.
It doesn't consider the conservation easement against.
Well, that's part of it. The other part of it was there were things that were on properties that were not being included or weren't actually defined properly in the ordinance. For instance, on a property, you may have an easement for drainage ditch or something like that. And that lot area, that was, it was ambiguous a little bit as to whether that was part of your lot area for the purposes of calculating impervious, impervious surface. So this ordinance makes it a little bit more clear, clearly defined what actually is to be used for determining lot area. When they're doing qualifying improvement, which qualifying improvements are defined as, as, there's a certain threshold of improvement that you do on your property before it becomes qualifying. So, uh, that's basically what it serves to do, is, is to redefine what we include and don't include in the calculation of your lot size.
And like the previous ordinance, this one was drafted, it was reviewed by our planning commission. There were a couple of back and forths. It, once it got to the point where we were all satisfied with the language, it was sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission for their review, and it has been advertised and it is ready to be adopted. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance two seventy three.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven is consideration of proposed ordinance number two seven four, amending section nine zero zero point zero three of our zoning ordinance as amended.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, to revise the impervious, impervious area requirements for otherwise non-conforming lots and make the lots conforming if they meet certain criteria.
Okay, this almost is connected with the previous one. It was all reviewed at the same time under the same kind of auspices. And what this one's designed to do is basically loosen up restrictions on smaller properties, so that they're more fairly able to do something on their property. So the impervious surface area is larger than fifteen percent on a smaller piece of property, because it's just too restrictive. So that's, that's what this is about. Believe that this one is about that.
Yes, yeah, there was, so that, there was, yeah, there was too much of a restrict, you know, there, there was concern, there was too much of a restriction on these smaller lots, and obviously, when you have the lot created, that's non-conforming. It creates constraint issues, so now they just added the maximum for all lots of those sizes to be the fifteen percent, which is similar to other lots and within specific districts in your zoning.
Yeah, this was most, this is mostly in reaction to some issues that people are having in Ottsville, where the lots are small, houses are taking up impervious surface already, and they're not able to do things like even put in walkways or, or patios or anything like that, so.
Without coming to the zoning hearing.
Yeah, without having to come to a variance. So this sort of loosens it up a little, it makes it so that an individual property owner will not have to come into a variance for minor things because they live on a small piece of property that's already pretty much built out and maybe already non-conforming when it comes to impervious surface. So that's, that's what it's for.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
And same process for this ordinance as the other one. So this has been through multiple rounds, multiple reviews. It has been advertised. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two seventy four.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have consideration of township committee appointments. I will make a motion. Second. I will make a motion to appoint Melissa Gusterson to our planning commission. Melissa was one of the four applicants for Township Supervisor when we had a vacancy earlier this year. John and I were super impressed, and I believe, Mike, you've had an opportunity to.
Articulate and has professional experience adjacent to what she'd be doing on planning commission.
Yes, so, um, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Okay, we are at the second round of public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes.
Catherine Narabock Center Road. First, I want to thank Amy for giving her presentation on the two fifty planning, and I've been working a little bit with her. She's doing all the heavy lifting with the application and things. So, um, you know, we are, we'll be coming back to you, of course, updates and, and always, you know, seeking support of the township for this event, but we're thrilled to be able to include the schools as well, because I think that's so critical in, in the expanding of, of enthusiasm about our history. Another item, just, she forgot to mention, that she has various things scheduled at the Stover House. And coming up is May third for the Spring Festival or whatever. So that's a very exciting thing. So the website is the Irwin Stover House, county website?
I'll pop up and say something.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that you knew about that. Coming up this Friday, Lenape Chamber Ensemble, our wonderful concerts, fiftieth season. Fifty years of the concerts happening here in Tinicum, so try to, or do absolutely come to the Upper Tinicum Lutheran Church, eight PM for the Friday night concert. There's also one at Dalvau on Sunday, but these are very unique and special events. And we are very blessed to have the Lenape Chamber Ensemble as a part of our community. So I just wanted to remind everyone for that. And they could, you get to see the church too, which is really neat. The question on the bridge items that you briefly mentioned in the engineer's report. What is the status on the different bridges as far as activity or planning or input on those? Because they're all historic and a part of our unique collection.
Yes, that will actually be something as part of the agenda for next Monday's Historical Commission meeting. And we'll be reviewing bridges heavily.
Okay, all right. Now, is there, I had sent you something about maybe creating a resolution for the township about the protection of our historic bridges to help alert all the agencies to be very mindful in their, in that process. Is that something that?
That's also something we'll be discussing next Monday at Historical Commission.
Okay, all right. Because I do encourage that, and it's been found to be very helpful in other communities. And, and things. So it's, uh, we have a really unique collection here, so I think that's, that's truly important. So, um, that being said, I think that's all. I just wanted to check and see.
Thank you, Kathy.
You don't know? Okay, fine.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Yeah, come on.
Could we so kindly please get everybody to sign in also?
Thank you so much. There's a sign in sheet there. Thank you.
So I was so excited about the event for next year that I forgot to mention the events for this year. So for those of you who are not familiar, the Irwin Stover House and Barnes right on River Road is run by the county, and we are open every weekend, twelve to four, May through October for historic tours. It's really a beautiful place to go to walk, sit on the porch and rock and learn a little bit about our beautiful history. But we open our event every year with a, uh, Spring Festival, and it's, uh, this year's May third. And it is a Revolutionary War theme, so we're going to have reenactors, some, um, marching and musket drills. We're going to have some food waste specialists talking about how colonials foraged for food. Where we have a maypole and some Morris dancers doing demonstrations, live music by the Boys of County Bucks. And some first-person interpretation by the Tinicum Players, who are a volunteer group of thespians, actors, who do all of our first-person events at the site. So on top of the weekend tours, we do monthly evening gatherings at the house where you can step back in time and experience life of what it would have been like in Tinicum in a different decade. So the first one we have is, um, May, Thursday, May fifteenth or sixteenth, I don't remember the date. Um, and it's seventeen nineties, and we're talking about the Whiskey Rebellion and Fries Rebellion. And their events are from six to nine, and all, the events are all free. So, uh, our website is on the Bucks County Parks and Recreation page. When you go there, there's a History and Heritage button, and that takes you to the Irwin Stover site. And though technically not in Tinicum, we are opening the Stover Barn on Dark Hollow Road this year again. It's undergone a lot of restoration, and so that'll be open June through September on the weekends as well.
The mill, right? Not the barn?
Sorry, the mill.
Okay.
Did I say barn?
You said barn.
The, the mill. And hopefully, if, if, if I can do Charleski justice, I will get it running again. But it suffered during Ian, it went four feet underwater, and so there's a lot of restoration work inside and also on the roof. If you drive past, you've seen that we've had the roofs restored.
Okay.
So that's all. I felt like I should have shared that.
Thank you.
So thank you and hope I will see you all at the site at some point.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? Yeah, Tim, come on up.
Yes, Tim Cashman resident. I just want to add something to the Hickers Road Bridge. From what I'm seeing and finding out, From what I'm seeing and finding out that this non-historical bridge, everyone says it's historical, but it's still listed as not even a historical bridge. But since it's old, people probably call it that. We're going through the process with PennDOT right now. We were told by PennDOT when we were at the meeting back in February, basically of last year, I think, we know it was back in probably June when we had the big meeting down at the firehouse.
It's February eighth twenty-four.
Basically, you know, that we're going to get the permit, not a problem. PennDOT said, we're not going to get the permit. It's not going to be that fast. Kurt said it's not going to be a problem. Now we're here in delays and we're going to wait. The application actually went in February of this year, not December. It was February eleventh. And now we have a review that's going to happen July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And that review is not going to give us an answer. It's just going to be a review of the whole process. That doesn't mean it's not going to be delayed even further than that. But we were promised the bridge in January twenty twenty-six, if we went in this direction that you guys voted on.
Anything else?
I want to know why we didn't take the other option when we were promised, you, you said you're going to get the bridge sooner. You and John voted on that. It didn't get voted to the public. And now we're going to miss that date, obviously, and we still won't have a decision until Ja- July of this year. And you're not even telling the public about that. That's on the website, the Pennsylvania website. I want to know why you're not giving all that information out.
Do you have anything else for your public comment, Tim? Public comment is not like a Q and A. It's not an opportunity to interrogate the board members. And, and we may elect to respond to questions or concerns that you raise.
Would you like to respond?
We will when it's time for supervisor comment. Do you, is there anything else you want to add?
I want to know why you can't comment now. Why do we have to wait for supervisors' comment?
Okay.
You comment when everyone else is up here.
Do you want a copy of these? You could take one. They're on the sideboard.
What's that?
These are the rules and procedures for public meetings.
Okay.
Do you want it?
How about this? How about you answer emails when someone sends them to you?
Okay.
Obviously, this is your room.
Any further public comment? Alright, Kathy.
Yes, Catherine Narabock Center Road. I just wanted to correct the statement that was just made. The Headquarters Road Bridge is listed in the National Register by special review of the Keeper of the National Register. And a letter was issued verifying its historic significance. So I just want to make that clear because maybe some folks missed that letter or the comment. So it is on the national, it's a very historic bridge. And I'm grateful and I know others are of the township's efforts for the restoration of that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Yes.
Hi, Quimby. Resident, in regards to the fence, just some observing things I've seen is with the ordinance of the setbacks of fences, fences don't grow. The intersection of Jug Town and River Road used to be a wide open lawn. People bought it and decided they wanted to plant landscaping, shrubbery and stuff. And it's taken a fairly easy intersection now and made it a little more difficult. So in our consideration of fences, just, I think we should just keep in mind that fences don't, they don't grow. So if we can be lenient on a setback on a fence, as long as it does not obstruct the vision, maybe we could be a little more lenient on that. Sorry to hear about your son. I think hopefully we can work this out with the lady. One suggestion, maybe in your best interest to compromise a little bit so the snowplows don't hit it. Because the motto in the township is you can't fix stupid. And some of those people aren't going to care. They want the paycheck and they want to get done to go home. So that's all.
Sir, could you have a comment?
Good evening. My name is Chris Horner. I'm a full-time paramedic with Upper Bucks Regional EMS. And despite the guy who signs my paycheck being here, I'm actually not here to speak on behalf of U Brem's, but on behalf of community individuals that have came up and expressed confusion on what exactly is going on. And one thing I wanted to relay to you guys, the importance of the two station here in Upper Bucks region. And mainly that's because we all hear that one forty-one, which is the Springfield location and how it goes over to Quakertown. If you take that stopgap away, it's going to be the truck here that's going down. Central Bucks ambulance, they go to Quakertown. Plumstead Township ambulance, that's over there, also goes over to Quakertown. It's not only just Quakertown that this ambulance moves outside of the area to. It's Lehigh County that the ambulance gets pulled to, to station over there for hours at a time because they're busy. North Hampton County as well, because they're very short staffed. One forty-two's having one forty-one's be that bridge to actually alleviate that mess for you guys to actually have service here is actually a blessing for you. Without one forty-one's, the Springfield Township ambulance, whoever it is, whether it's U Brem's, Central Bucks, Plumstead, that truck is going to be doing all of that work. There's no backdoor contracts with anybody. It's just the way the municipalities work. I'm sorry, not the municipalities, the mutual aid works with the individual EMS agencies. So if Central Bucks brings one truck up in this area and whether it's regionalized or not, they're still added to that box card and will be pulled just as frequently as the other stations were. So if that twenty percent that was quoted on Thursday's meeting of the call volume for Upper Bucks is, is not going to differentiate. If anything, you're only taking into consideration Quakertown and not all the other ambulances that are, that were pulled to cover and stationed for a long period of time, which is then leaving a big gap in your hole or in your area. On top of that, it was commented last week that the nine one one system diverts ambulances to the area when, when there is a big gap. That actually doesn't happen unless there's five ambulances around that are not, or that are busy on runs. So you guys are almost a third of the entire county, right? So if the Revere Station goes out on a call, they're not bringing a truck anywhere close up to here until Plumstead is out on a call, until Central Bucks is out on a call. Then maybe when they have this huge gigantic hole of resources, which is ambulance numbers, not your actual area. Because technically you might be a gigantic area, but you're low down on probability of call volume. Those ambulances aren't being moved. There's been only two times in the past three years an ambulance has been moved to this area to assist. And those were with individual fires, a fire last year and a fire two years ago where we moved the ambulances up so that in case more people were harmed, that we were okay. But there has never been an actual movement of ambulances to your area. I do not have exact numbers quoted or to quote in front of me at this time. I was the acting deputy chief of the squad until January of this year. So I do have a very formal information of numbers to be able to quote to you, that at least, but not the information in front of me as I don't have access to it. But as long as you guys have that information to be able to, whichever way you go, whether you're staying with you Upper Bucks, whether you're staying or going to move over to Central Bucks or Plumstead, the two-station model protects you. And I know that it sounds crazy to sit here and say that, you know, why should Tinnicum pay for somebody going to Quakertown? It's a community. We all need to work together. And like I said, I'm not here to plead with you on behalf of please stay with Upper Bucks. I know that I, I work for them. It's more of, I'm trying to look out for you guys. Because as one of the people that come to your houses, we care about you. Alright, so whoever you're going to comment, I'll, I can work for Central Bucks tomorrow if that's the case. I really want to make sure that you guys are aware of the actual harm that a one station can actually lead for you guys. And I don't feel like the, all that information was given out to you, but I just wanted to let you guys know that. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Alright, is there any supervisor comment?
I'd just like to thank everybody that makes Tinnicum work. You know, all the public safety fit, all the public safety, all the fire, all the EMS, all the office staff, all the road crew.
All the volunteers.
I have two things. One thing is I'd like to announce that the Stover Mill Gallery is going to begin their summer season this weekend. Opening on April fifth. There are two artists there. One is, I had the names in my head and they went away. There are two artists there, but multiple, multiple media to choose from. Graphite, pastel, oil, watercolors, you name it. They've got all sorts of media. So the opening is, well, the gallery opens on Saturday from eleven to five, not one to five rather. And one to five and it'll be open on Sunday also, which is when the artist reception is going to be one to five. And then those two artists will be in there for the month of April, again Saturdays and Sundays from one to five. And so just encourage you to go out there. Again, it's a free gallery to go in and look, looking at what's there and maybe actually buy something.
It's living and looking at nature's beauty, specimens and landscapes.
Yeah.
Carol Ashton, Her- Her- Hergherhan and Sandy Ashkey Adams.
That one I knew, but there's the other one I couldn't, couldn't come up with. Okay. Because I don't know that one. Sandy Askew Adams, I've actually hosted one of her shows before and she's tremendous. So, you know, it's, it's worthwhile to go down just to look. And again, it's free and take it in. I'd like to answer some of what Mr. Cashman had to say. There should be no surprise to anybody first off that I voted the way I did because I've maintained the same position since this whole fracas began somewhere around two thousand eight, two thousand nine. When the original plan that PennDOT brought in here was to take the thing basically straight, straighten out everything and take it straight across what is now Steve Gitomol's field. And that was met with a lot of opposition. So they came back with another plan that realigned the bridge into its, basically the alignment that it's in right now. They had a design, artist conceptions, the work that I've found was very acceptable. I don't have any great love for that bridge. I hate to say that, Kathy, but you know Kathy knows. I've said to her in the parking lot one time, when are you just going to give up and let PennDOT do what they want to do? And she said to me, if you remember the conversation, Kathy, oh, we're never giving up. So that was, that was probably ten years ago. So that's, and, and they haven't given up. I saw, I've always of that position where PennDOT should be able to go in and build the bridge they want unless, unless those who want to have the bridge restored pony up the cash. Rich Rosamilla mentioned it to me several times. And I've came, I came into a public meeting and I said that here at the public meeting a couple of times. If they want to, if they want the bridge restored, come forward with the cash and come with it upfront, not like what happened with the Giggle Hall Road Bridge where cash was promised for a maintenance fund, which we only saw part of it. We also saw part that came from Bruce Wallace and that's all we saw. So I wanted to see the money upfront, come up with the money upfront for the construction and, and maintenance. Well, then the township, in order to solve this problem, should take the bridge back and go ahead and have it restored. What difference does it make? We can drive across a restored bridge as well as one that PennDOT puts in. But that's always been my position. And it's substantiated also by a letter to the editor that I wrote on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. It appeared in the Herald. You can look it up. You can find it easily enough. Use my entire name. Make sure you use the middle initial and it'll pop right up there. And you'll see that that's exactly the way I felt. So it should be no surprise that I made that, that, that vote. And, you know, if people who saw that letter and people saw my website and saw what my position was, that the township really needed maybe to look at a different direction in this, I'm sure Bruce Wallace saw that and said, well, this is the guy we should maybe get in there and he helped me win this election that I won. And I won it pretty big. I went out there with this, but people, you know, when you go out and do an election run, you're going to find out this was the first thing people are going to ask about. What's going on with the bridge? And I presented this exact thing that I'm telling you now. So clearly this resonated with a lot of people. And, and so it shouldn't be a surprise that I voted that way at all. Just going to make that, make that clear. Now, Mr. Cashman came up here and he started to give out some numbers and, and, and refuting what has happened here. I don't have it here. I thought it was in the engineer's report, but I know I've got numerous emails that, that described the timeline. We applied for this permit, I believe, on, on December sixteenth or somewhere around there is when he applied for the permit with the GP eleven permit, it was submitted with the stuff from the state historic and amusing, music, musician, museum commission. Yeah, thank you, PHMC. Well, people ask, who's PHMC? Well, that's what it is. So, so, and, and also the Army Corps of Engineers, all their, they signed off on this thing. And it was rescinded on December twenty-fourth. No, we received the permit on December twenty-fourth. Merry Christmas to us. And it was rescinded somewhere around the middle of January, maybe the fourteenth or something like that is when all of a sudden, I mean, we were ready to go. Just like Tim Cashman came up here and said at least a half a dozen times to this township, PennDOT has got their permits, all the lawsuits are cleared out, they're ready to go. He must have said that at least a half a dozen times to this, to this, to this community here, and we still don't have a bridge there. So clearly, PennDOT coming, we're not, we're not.
I'm not going to have you talking about like that. If I can't have a discussion with you and you have you berate me. You know, you're, you're, you're caught off the line here.
Tim.
Tim, you're going to be asked to leave.
Then ask me to leave.
Okay.
I'm not going to have you. You're going to sit there?
Tim.
No, I'm not going to talk to that.
This is supervisor. No, Tim, this is not your turn to speak. This is supervisor comment.
Okay, you, you let me finish here, Tim. I sat here quietly. You let you finish. Okay? You, there, it is, it is, it is, we can probably go back to minutes and find where you came in, where Tim Cashman came in here and said that PennDOT was ready to go. Now, there were then appeals, and appeals, and more appeals, and other real appeals. And then Steve Gitomol got involved, which is when I wrote my letter to the editor here, to the Herald. I wanted Steve Gitomol to get out of the way, but he didn't. He stayed there. And he promised five to six, seven years of litigation. And when I looked at the situation back in January or December, I guess the last year, it was clear to me that he still had two or three years left of litigation. So that's the choice I had. Never in my wildest dreams did I believe that the Department of Environmental Protection, which was okay with issuing a permit to PennDOT to tear into the bank and redo everything in the stream bed that they were going to do, would then all of a sudden decide, yeah, we're not real sure about this project. So, okay. The thing that bothers me about this is that you're looking at the board in an adversarial way. But we're not the ones that are stopping this process right now. Through the years, people have been angry with, with Bruce Wallace. They've been angry with Wood Tiger. They've been angry with, with, with the River Keepers. They've been angry with Steve Gitomol because they were the ones holding up the project. I agree with you. I, during that entire time, I don't think anybody ever heard me stand up here and say, no, we have to restore that bridge. I've never said that. And I've never been one that was particularly an advocate for that. I'm an advocate for solving the problem. That's what I'm an advocate for. And when I voted for this, I saw this as the best way to solve this problem is to just, okay, as Tim Cashman said one time at a meeting, we can't let Bruce Wallace win. Well, what's he winning? He's losing five million dollars out of his, out of his foundation's funds. He's no longer the adversary. The adversary is the Department of Environmental Protection. So instead of coming up here and going after the board, my suggestion is, and I'll throw a gauntlet down right now, go to the D E P. Now, you can't probably get to the D E P, but you can get to your state representative. And my suggestion is, and I'm more than willing to go down there with you, believe in me, I'm not one that's going to back off from any kind of fight. But go, let's get a guy, get a bunch of us together and we'll go down to Shelley Labs office, Shelby Labs office. And we'll insist, we will demand that she become much more active in helping us solve this problem and figure out what the D E P is trying to prove here with their recalcitrants when it comes to issuing this permit. Because there's no reason for it. We gave them what they needed in December. We gave them twice now again, what they needed in January, February and now into March. They no longer will even answer emails. We send emails to them. Our, our engineer sends emails to them. Hey, what's the status and all? The last one he got back literally said, you're distracting us from our deliberations and keeping us from, from being able to look this over and approve this project. In other words, shut up and go away. That's not a way for an organization to act either. There's your, there's your adversary. Coming up here and coming after us is going to do nothing at all. So you want to be effective? So you wanna be effective, you wanna do something, have the courage to pick up the gauntlet and run with it. Get yourself an organized group together and go down to Ms. Lab's office and make sure she knows we're taking this pretty darn serious. The email message I heard about, or the voicemail message I heard from down her office today is like, well, we got the meeting together in February. What have you done since? What have you done since? And I'll be calling tomorrow her office to ask her, well, what are you gonna do now? All right, it's been two and a half, three months now and, or two and a half months now, you still haven't done anything. We gotta get this done. So I agree to tell you, frustration is built up on this board too. But we're not your enemy. We're not your enemy. We are trying to get this done. And to me, this was the quickest way to get it done. And I'm not, and I'm not in anybody's corner in this, except the township's corner. It's the township's corner. I want this thing done and fixed and resolved. And unfortunately, I did not perceive at all that our adversary would be the Department of Environmental Protection, when everybody else is sitting here and lining up and saying, this is a great project. Historic Commission loves it, the Army Corps of Engineers loves it, the Parks, the National Park Service, they all love the fact that this thing's going to get restored. It's great, but the DEP, they're standing in our way. So you can come up here and yell at us all you want and you can question our actions all you want. But the fact of the matter is, we have done those actions now. It's history. We own the bridge now. I don't think either Eleanor and I are gonna vote to turn it back to the state again. And even if we did, I'm not sure that the state would take it back. So let's do something that's constructive. Instead of coming up here and being divisive and yelling at a board that's been doing what it can to get this project done, help us get done what you want done. Let's put some, some notice onto Shelby Labs office. We need your help and we're serious about it. And, and maybe she'll push it a little harder when she knows there's a lot of people who really want her to work on this. Okay, I mean, that's, that's my suggestion. If you don't wanna take it up, fine, but we're gonna continue down the road we're going down. But until some sort of pressure gets onto the DEP to get off their stumps and get out there and, and, and get the permit that we justly deserve, it's gonna continue on, like you say, who knows how long. But there's your adversary. Coming at us is not gonna help one bit. It's not gonna help the township one bit. And that's all I think about is this township. I wanna get this township fixed.
I'm just standing up there telling the truth.
As you saw, go ahead.
Okay, so for a full recap of why the decision was made, when it was made back in February of twenty twenty-four, anyone can go and watch the video recording of that meeting and see the presentation from PennDOT and see the presentation from the Riverkeeper Network and, well, not really presentation, presentation, their expression of support of the historic rehabilitation of the bridge. You can see the presentation of the Wood Tiger Fund and you can hear the rationale of all the supervisors who were there to take a vote. So, you know, the, the proposed rehabilitation project was specifically designed to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Properties. It's been approved, as we said, by the US Army Corps of Engineers, the National Park Service, the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission and the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office. It is the township's position that we have fully and comprehensively answered all of the department's comments on the pending GP eleven permit application. And we are, we've urged them today in writing, we can do it now. We are urging them to issue the GP eleven permit for the Headquarters Road Bridge promptly. With regard to Upper Bucks Regional EMS, as we announced at the beginning, we had a two and a half hour meeting last week on this. That meeting, even though it was not a business meeting where deliberation would take place for, for transparency and to, to make the information that this board is gathering widely available to our community. We recorded that meeting and the link to that recording is available on the township's website. I've already been contacted by an elected official from a neighboring township thanking us for having that meeting and thanking us for recording it because they were appreciative that all that information was being collected and discussed openly and is available for anyone. And finally, I would just encourage everyone to join our EAC on April twenty-seventh from eleven to two at the Tinacum Township Community Park behind Cooper Mechanical for the Earth Day Fair. We, some of you may recall, last year the township approved working with Penn State's local climate action program. So we have a graduate student from Penn State who's been working with our EAC to develop a local climate action plan for the township and she'll be there to answer questions. And I believe the theme of, of it is the plastic bag ordinance that was recently passed. So it, and I did receive confirmation today from our EAC chair that we have a vendor committed for savory and sweets, so food will be provided. It'll be a good time for all. So, thank you. And anything else?
No.
No? All right. So I will make a, yes. All right, Todd.
Just joking.
Okay. It's a good one. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Todd.
All in favor. Thank you. Good night.
Ed, Ed. I meant to ask you a question the other day and then I forgot to ask you while you were standing up there.
Yes.
And now I've again forgotten what it was. But I need your phone number in case it comes.